There tomorrow.
Was it?
Yeah.
Remind me. There's. For just. I'm both thirty eight and one for tonight. I had to get a blank card on the school.
There's no.
Not in my office. Keep it. Happy Internet.
I guess the little churches.
I love that.
I like that.
Juicy, it's juicy though.
See it minds.
My grandma bless her heart sometimes.
She didn't have a problem, but still it's not.
She called it black chicken.
Uh, mine's.
So you put, let me see, so potatoes, carrots, onion. Yeah.
Yep.
Garlic.
It's good.
A little wish to shoot it last night. I let it cook over there.
Do they take the meat like, like they make a sandwich with it? Like it'll melt the cheese on it and stuff. Delicious.
Don't, don't get me to you.
All you do, I'm.
There you go. Pretty good roll.
Get your new chairs, huh?
Huh? Ah, yeah. We squeaked it up. You squeaked me to the point to be stopped with heat with the money and get the other chair.
Nine years I've been helping.
I think someone was making yours. Sapata back there.
I would've had the chairs tomorrow, I guess, too. I've been, I've been against it, I just never gone. I figure if she's there, then I'll be.
He's been hiding them on us.
I know. I've been going for years.
I'm calling to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand sixteen at six thirty P M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahuzis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tara Panny.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Slattery.
Here.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Milton Smith from the Herman, Mount Herman Missionary Baptist Church. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord God, we come to you tonight thanking you for yet another day. That you're blessed to do so many things. And we pray your blessings upon this meeting this night. We ask that you bless our city leaders. Grant them wisdom and knowledge as they make decisions concerning the city and the citizens. We pray for public safety officials, our fire and police, keep them safe as they watch visual over us as we sleep at night. We pray for the staff of this city as well as all the residents. In these blessings, we ask in your gracious and glorious name, amen.
Glad you only just hit the flag in the United States of America. And to the Republic which is fast. One nation under God, in the physical, liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our commission meeting. This is the last meeting of the year. So, thank you for being here tonight. Uh, we're now going to the public comments on the items that will not be discussed tonight. If you have any comments, please come forward. Here none. We, we're now going to the item number one, which is the proclamation on the feast day of the Epiphany. The City of Tarpon Springs Florida proclamation, whereas his eminent, 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 his eminent Geron Archbishop Dimitrios of America and his eminent Metropolitan Elections of Atlanta will be celebrating the feast day of Epiphany. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs welcomed Honored Gas Greek Debeary Minister of Foreign Affairs, Council General of Greece, Mayor of Kalimnos, Council Members of Kalimnos and Mayor of Halke to the celebration. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs has been identified by history and tradition as a city in the United States with the longest consecutive celebration of the feast day of the Epiphany and home to the oldest and largest celebration in the United States. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs has been internationally known and officially designated as Epiphany City. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs is honored, is home to the Saint Nicholas Greek Orthodox Cathedral, the patron saint, sponges, shrimping and fishing seamen. And whereas the feast day of Epiphany is steadfast in truth to the belief and customs reaching tradition and culture of the Orthodox Christian faith. And whereas his eminent Archbishop Dimitrios and his eminent Metropolitan Elections have bestowed special honor to the City of Tarpon Springs and to the Saint Nicholas Greek Orthodox Cathedral for their participation on this special occasion of the feast day of the Epiphany. And now therefore, I Chris Alahuzis, by virtue of authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim January sixth, two thousand seventeen as a celebration of a hundred and eleven anniversary feast day of Epiphany. Father Sampson from Saint Nicholas Cathedral will come and accept that with the President of the Community, Mr. Corvett.
Thank you, Father. Michael. Do you want to say a few words about celebration? Please? Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I'm Father Sampson Cassapakis from Saint Nicholas Cathedral. For those who I do not know, um, most recently, I'm there as the assistant and was most recently there now for the past year and a half. Uh, we just also received our new head priest, uh, Father Athanasios Ados, who's from South Carolina, who's been joining us since November first. And to give you a gist of what we do on the, on Epiphany, of course, as it's been going on for a hundred and eleven years. It's a beautiful ceremony, um, but it's the day in which we celebrate the baptism of Christ. And it's a, it's a necessary feast day within the church for our salvation. And it's what we believe in within the Orthodox Church. And the ceremony of which you see at, that's down at Spring Bayou is the blessing of the waters. And it's not just, as you know, how the bayou system has to be connected to something. It's not just blessing Spring Bayou, it's blessing the whole city of Tarpon Springs. Water being a very powerful, powerful substance of that our earth is created of. Uh, seventy-five percent of the earth is made out of water. And so not to say that we're only blessing seventy-five percent of God's creation, but eh, water is a necessity within our lives, within our bodies, biologically even. And so with that, we bless the waters, we bless everything. And that's why the baptism is such an important role within all, in many Christian churches, not just the Orthodox Church. Um, in that day, since we are, as Mayor Chris has already said, with the longest lasting celebration, we invite all of the hierarchs of which we can that are within the states. And of course, we even have prominent people coming from over from Greece to joining us. Um, and it's a very well attended event. I know there's, people have thrown out large numbers, twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand. If it's on a weekend, there might be forty thousand, I don't know, I've heard all of these numbers. And it's a, it's a beautiful moment where we all get to come together and pray and receive a blessing from the hierarchs within the Greek Orthodox Church. So I want to thank you all for proclaiming this day as the Saint Nicholas Epiphany Celebration Day with this proclamation. God bless you all and thank you for everything that you guys do for the City of Tarpon Springs.
Thank you, Father. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none, any commission comment? Thank you, we are now going to, uh, the concern agenda. Number two, item number two is the minutes, October fourth, two thousand sixteen, the regulation session. B is October eighteen, two thousand sixteen, regulation session. C is November first, two thousand sixteen, regulation session. D is November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, regulation session. Three is satisfaction and release of leams. Four is the attorney feeds. Five is a special event. A Sponge Ducks Arts and Crafts Show on January fourteenth through sixteen, two thousand seventeen. B is the Dr. Martin Luther King Parade and Festival, January fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. C is Movies at the Craig Park, January twenty-seventh, February twenty-fourth and March twenty-fourth. D is the first Friday from February third through November third, two thousand seventeen. Six is approved contract with the supervisors of election. Seven is a warning bid seventeen zero zero twenty-seven dash B dash C M Bulldog Richard Irvin Bark. Eight is the award file number seventeen zero zero fifty dash N dash uh, R S, bar screen parts and service. Number nine is award file number seventeen zero zero fifty-four, C, C M, air conditioning products, installation services and related products and services. Ten is approved name change and renew, air liquid instruction, uh, industrial U S file number sixteen zero zero seventeen dash C dash R S, award file number seventeen zero zero fifty-three dash N dash R S, single source source, purchase of pump, motor repair parts and maintenance. Number twelve is the award file number seventeen zero zero fifty-one, C dash C M, irrigation supplies, contract number five sixty-two dash eleven seventy-two, one dash five. And thirteen is the award file seventeen zero zero fifty-four, fifty-two dash C dash C M, utilizing the National Joint Powers Alliance Contract, number zero twenty-two zero fourteen A N, A M I, sewer vacuum, hydro excavation and street sweeper equipment with related accessories and supplies for the purchase of closed circuitry, T V cameras and accessories. Is there any item that you like to pull?
I don't have any pull, Mayor, I just want to make a comment about one.
Which one?
I just wanted to call, uh, the board's attention to five C. And I just want to say what a great, uh, idea that is that's being proposed by, uh, their recreation department. I just wanted to call attention to it.
Yeah, we're gonna have three events for that.
What's that?
Three events.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's being, yeah, it's being, I'm moving in Craig Park, being proposed by the rec department. I think that's worth mentioning, so.
That's good.
I'm appreciative of their hard work.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other item? No. Are there any public comments on this item? Reverend Smith, do you want to say something about the parade that we're going to have on the fourteenth?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, two thousand and seventeen event, uh, is being planned. Uh, we have, uh, great participation this year. Uh, we're looking forward to, uh, two bands being in the parade this year. We'll have, uh, Tarpon Springs High School Band, perhaps maybe not the full band, band, but some of their members. Uh, we'll also have New Mount Zion, uh, Drumline Band out of Saint Petersburg, uh, in the parade. Uh, we've tried to get the word out, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, mailing list, we've used their mailing list and sent out, uh, over two hundred, uh, announcements, uh, more than once over the last couple of months. And so we're, we're, uh, asking for, uh, the citizens of Tarpon Springs to come out, uh, and line the streets and, 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 and see what we have to present in keeping the, uh, uh, legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King's dream alive here in Tarpon Springs. And, uh, we invite churches, community groups, civic organizations to come out and be in the parade. And we appreciate every year, uh, the city commissioner, mayor and, uh, uh, other elected officials that often walk with us, uh, in the, in the, uh, in the parade. Again, we will, uh, line up on the corner of, of Tarpon Avenue and Levis Avenue, right next to Vincent Funeral Home. We'll use that area of Levis Avenue as a staging area. And we will start at eleven o'clock sharp. So, thank you very much for year after year co-sponsoring this event with us. Uh, I believe it's a very important event for the city.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any commission comments? Here none. I need a motion to approve that.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tara Panny?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes. We're now going to the item number fourteen, which is Resolution twenty sixteen dash forty, call for election and approve ballot language. City Attorney will read the title.
Resolution twenty sixteen dash forty, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, calling for the general election to be held on March fourteenth, twenty seventeen, for the purpose of electing two commissioners to serve a term of three years each, providing for establishment of the ballot for said election, providing for the notice to the supervisor elections and providing for the effective date hereof.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? None, any commission comment?
Can I make a quick comment? I just wanted to congratulate Commissioner Seber for running unopposed.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
We're very proud and look, looking forward to serving with you. Yeah, awesome job, thank you.
Congratulations. Yes.
Uh, I just had a, just a quick question to, uh, the clerk. Do we have any idea what the election expenses this year?
Um, what they do now, um, they send you the bill ahead of time. And then if you owe them more or, or if they owe you a credit, they take it. And I think it was close to thirty-two thousand that we just did a invoice for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's not counting, just to add that, not counting our legal adds and stuff like that. That's just the, the cost for the, right, for the supervisor elections office.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Any public comments? Motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tara Panny?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes. We're now going to the item number fourteen, which is Resolution twenty sixteen dash forty-one, designation of red mangrove as the official tree of the City of Tarpon Springs. City Attorney will read the resolution.
Resolution twenty sixteen dash forty-one, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, designating the red mangrove tree as the city's official tree and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments on? Public comments? You've been waiting for that.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Commissioners Chief, everybody. Um, I appreciate y'all moving on this. It's, I think it's great for the city. It, it, it really plays up with our, plays into our ecology. It's a great educational tool. The graphic is absolutely beautiful and is a working waterfront. I think it's such a perfect fit for Tarpon Springs. So I deeply appreciate your support and a piece for Tarpon. The, the woman actually who came up with the idea is in the audience, Mary Sharrow, who, who just landed on the red mangrove as a wonderful symbol. And we have some other supporters with us here tonight, so appreciate this and look forward to having it be part of the city's brand and something we can all be proud of.
Well, thank you, I support you afterward to adopt the tree as the mangrove, red mangrove for, uh, as the official tree for the City of Tarpon Springs. And I appreciate that you went around and got all the support from the different organizations, thought that was great. Did you have the opportunity to go to the schools and share the idea with the, uh, elementary schools? You, you showed me some literature that you had available to go to different schools. I just wondered if you had the opportunity to do that.
Our first marketing piece, follow-up for that is going to be a coloring contest. We wanted to have this approval first because what we want to do is finish the mock-up of the poster. And now we'll be able to say official, when the red mangrove image is there, um, we can set, put piece for Tarpon symbol there. We can also have the city seal there and say official tree, the City of Tarpon Springs, so that we could present it to the principals and the educators. But we plan on doing that all the way from early learning and, uh, of course, the charter schools, public schools here in the city. And, uh, we'll make sure that everyone's aware of it and maybe a very exciting coloring contest. Judge or two might come out of this group, so.
That'll be a good learning experience for the kids.
Yeah, it'd be great.
Thank you. Any comments?
Yes, thank, uh, yes, uh, th- th- this is a, a great idea, Robin. Thank you for, uh, spearheading this. I will not be judging it for obvious reasons, I have no artistic talent or taste. Uh, I, I just want to make sure whatever design we come up with, that we're consistent in the branding of it, the city. Everyone uses the same design or, you know, rendering of this object, so. But I assume that'll, that'll come through some creative minds and contests and whatnot. But as long as we're on the same page, using the same graphic, that's all.
Yes, and before we have anything to, to go out to the general public, I'll meet with City Manager La Couris and, and see if anything needs to be vetted or brought before you and, and make sure that that's part of the process.
Right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Slattery? Okay. Ms. Seber?
Uh, thank you, Robin, for bringing this forward and, and for your artwork. It's, it's a beautiful tree and, and, uh, and what you'll be doing with, uh, with the kids too. So, uh, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
Yes, I have one more comment. Circling back around. No, I just want to say this is also a great opportunity to work with the Public Art Committee to see if there's some, some, uh, opportunities to further that image in different ways, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
I will entertain the motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tara Panny?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, that concludes the agenda for tonight, short and gentle. We're now going to the staff comments. Chief?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Uh, since we won't be seeing each other until January tenth, want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Patrick?
Uh, no comments, Commissioner. I just want to introduce myself, I'm Patrick Perez, I'm from J. Daniel's office. I'm one of the new attorneys at Trust Daniel and, uh, pleasure to be here, thank you.
Mr. La Couris?
Yeah, we want to tell them not to get used to, most of these meetings aren't so short. Doing stuff. Um, and it's good that we end two thousand sixteen with a red mangrove. I mean, I think that's a fitting way for us to, to end the year and get ready for some of the exciting things in the city for two thousand seventeen. Another, another great, um, accomplishment, um, that we'll end the year with. I know, I think you got the press release, I think late Friday when we heard, it ended up on Bay News nine this weekend, which was, which was pretty fast to them. And I said it again to you today, was our receiving the award for two thousand sixteen domestic wastewater plant operations excellence, um, from the Flor- Florida Department of Environmental Protection. We have seen the news in Pinellas County about wastewater treatment systems. It's all been bad news. There's been, there have been legislative meetings, there's been everything, but above all us, and we've represented the meetings, but we're glad to representing as a community doesn't have those problems. I think to accentuate that and show all the hard work that we've done throughout the years from commissions approving projects, from getting things done, from laying the lines. Some of the things people don't see, like parks, everybody sees the park, but the infrastructure that commissions and pass to, to have approved to see us end this year when this is one of the major negative issues in cities in Tarpon Springs for us to excel and get this award, which is going to be presented to us, um, February eighth, I think in Haynes City. Um, I think that's just an honor representing the city. And again, past commissions and people who brought this about, um, in these times. So, another good way to, to end two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen, going to Haynes City to pick up that award and bring it back to the city.
And if you bring it before the commission, we'd like to, uh, congratulate them in public.
We will.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
I also would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Commissioner Seber?
Um, I'm excited that our leadership Pinellas class is coming to Tarpon Springs tomorrow. So, um, I'm going to be happy to show them and, and boast a little bit about Tarpon Springs. Um, and let them know that Dunedin does not end, uh, at, Pinellas County does not end at Dunedin, as I always say. So, uh, I'm really excited about that. And I also want to wish everybody a great holiday and, uh, the best of everything in two thousand seventeen.
Vice Mayor Tara Panny?
Thank you. I just want to take the opportunity to wish everybody, uh, you know, Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas and tell the board what a pleasure it's been, uh, to work with you over the last year. I mean, ultimately, the last five or six years. But, you know, I feel like as a board, we really, uh, have been getting a lot of positive things done for the town and things that everybody, uh, can be proud of, especially, you know, those of us who sit on the board and, 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 you know, the volunteers on our boards. And I also want to take the opportunity to thank staff, uh, for what a great job they do. I mean, you know, our staff to me is so accessible to us and so responsive and, and not only responsive to us, but as responsive to residents in terms of their needs and their concerns, which is something that, you know, goes a long way for those people. So I'm just exceptionally proud of our staff to date. And I just hope we can, you know, hold on to everybody and continue to move forward positively in the new year. And, uh, you know, my time is coming to an end, so I'm starting to get a little sensitive and emotional about that. I know, I know, but, uh, so anyways, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year and, um, look for good things in two thousand seventeen.
Commissioner Patrick?
Thank you, yes, I want to wish everyone a Merry, Merry, Merry Christmas as well. And, uh, I want to thank Commissioner Seber for bringing, uh, uh, leadership Pinellas north of Dunedin to see Tarpon Springs tomorrow. I know we had youth leadership here, uh, last week, I believe, right? Yes, and that's always a pleasure. And we are the oldest and finest city in Pinellas County, so I think it's only fitting that they ride the bus up north. And I, or I think you're riding the jolly trolley, aren't you?
Jolly trolley's coming up.
Well, I'm sure they will see, uh, the, the, um, uh, the best of Tarpon. And, um, as well, like, like the, like, like the vice mayor said, I wa- I want to thank staff, what we do up here. I said it a hundred times with the citizens academy. Yeah, it wa- it wa- it wa- it was my idea, but we all have great, great, uh, things here that we want to get done, but without staff, they, they just would not happen. So we do have an amazing staff that works hard and often times for not the best pay. And I appreciate them very much that, 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 this holiday season, as we reflect back and look upon that. And, uh, looking forward to two thousand seventeen, not to lose the vice mayor off the board. But, uh, nonetheless, I'm sure, I, I hope that we continue to, to grow off of our, um, accomplishments, so thank you.
Thank you. Also like to wish everyone Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year and Happy Hanukkah to my Jewish friends. Uh, also like to remind everyone that, uh, on January sixth, we're going to have the great celebration of the Epiphany. Uh, invite everybody to come, it's going to be a, a great event. We're going to have a lot of people, uh, we're going to have a lot of visitors from many different places, including, uh, from, uh, people representing the Greek government as well. Uh, we're going to have, uh, the Mayor of Kalimnos and Halke, they're our sister cities. So it's going to be exciting, um, celebration, so. Again, I want to thank everybody for working so hard here in, um, in the city hall and everyone, uh, every staff and every employee that we have. We're very fortunate to have such a good employees. Um, I'm getting compliments every place I go, but our employees are so, um, uh, they're so service oriented and, um, uh, every place I go, they tell me very good things about employees and I'm very proud and thankful for their service. Happy New Year, everyone, and good night. Well, uh, that concludes the regular session tonight and is adjourned at six fifty-five.
I just got this glass.
You, uh, you did.
I did, I'll give that.
Yes.
I got brand new glasses.
Oh, did you?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. The worst part is the, uh. You just stuff that in the side. You know, I took this for a while, but I'm taking it for a fact. Pleasure meeting you.
Okay.
I, I already told him, so he. So, don't get used to that one.
I won't, I won't.
Don't get used to that one.
I appreciate, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a good night, Patrick, nice to see you again. Thank you.
I'm going to go to sleep.
I was afraid they would look at me, I was going to go. The thing, uh.
Oh my god. I hate, I hate when that happens. Well, last night I took the, uh, micro. I took the micro last night.
I know that you were out because when I posted the Christmas tree picture, which I didn't finish until like this is twelve thirty, one o'clock, and then sat, I couldn't sleep and stayed up and watched, you know? Yeah, that's how I'm feeling. And tomorrow, Leadership Pinellas, I have to like get up at five thirty for that, because I, I better get some sleep tonight.
And tomorrow, Leadership Pinellas, I have to like get up at five thirty for that, because I, I better get some sleep tonight. Yes, I know, we meet down.
Can't you just meet him here? Why drive it all the way down there?
We've done other stops.